It looks like she's on leave there.
Testing.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me? No, it's not working.
Technical difficulties, I believe. So.
Please state your name.
My name is Paul McGregor. I'm the applicant.
Okay.
I live at one seventy-one Coronado and also in San Gregorio. And I want to thank Summer for her presentation, Mr. Monowitz for all this coming together, DRC, my neighbors. And everybody else that has supported my project. I believe there's five or six letters that you should have in your file. From the neighbors that live directly next door to this property, across the street and so forth, and they're all in support of the project. I've allowed them to pick colors and so forth. I've changed windows to accommodate their needs and their concerns. And the house design fits in with the neighborhood. And it's really nice to be able to have an ADU at this point in time because it gives us more opportunity to have people living in the area versus coming over and walking on the beach and having nowhere to stay. As far as the design goes, our homes in the neighborhood, in fact, within eyesight that have flat roofs and so forth. That was a concern before. But I think times have changed. And so this reflects a design that we have. There were some questions as far as parking for the ADU. If you can pull up the site plan. So on the right side of the home, there is additional pavers in there, previous pavers. That allow additional parking instead of being right in front of the garage door. And this will give the tenants. The opportunity to park without blocking the two-car garage. So if you look at the right side, the landscape plan or the site plan, you can see the pavers continue down that side. That's ten feet wide, which will accommodate car or two. And this will give the additional parking that really should happen on something like this. Let me move on to the distance from the ocean. The actual distance from the ocean to this parfule is about two hundred thirty feet. Not one fifty. The closet office on the second floor speaks for itself. Sea level rise. Majority of the times that sea level rise happens down here is during the king tides, which is usually January, February. I witnessed it numerous times. I lived down here. I built houses down there. And you know when they're coming. When there's heavy storms and so forth. And Lisa Ketchum is correct that they did have some windows break out in their patio area. One was also inside the restaurant. And. That was from heavy winds and heavy seas, king tides that created that problem. But for the twenty-plus years that I've been down there. It's pretty similar that time of the year, not always as bad as this last one. As far as erosion goes, that area has been studied numerous times. There's a breakwater at the harbor that over the years has caused excessive. Degrading of the coast side. I think there's been studies on that. People are concerned that that jetty area right there has created this problem. I mean, in front of the Miramar, it used to be a flat beach, flat. You could walk right out there. And ever since they put up that. Stone riprap, it's generated a lot of erosion in that area. I'm sure Mr. Monowitz can attest to that. As far as longevity, longevity of homes and so forth, take a look at the Miramar restaurant. It's over a hundred years old, still standing. So that's something to consider at the same time. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any questions? Commissioner Swat-Sarana? You have a question?
No question.
You have questions? I had a couple of questions. So how did the this recent storm. Treat your area? Like, how did you weather it?
The area that is at the Miramar restaurant location is the lowest point on the promenade right there. So as you go up towards. Cypress Center and so forth, there's about a six-foot rise in elevation. The majority of the water and maybe some logs and stuff like that were thrown mainly in that area between their landish shores. I was down there looking at it. Lot of spray, a lot of king tide action, and that's what happens.
And in the past years, you mentioned you've seen some something not as bad as this year, but.
I've seen water wash up in the Miramar parking lot, probably going fifty feet past their front door. At times, and mainly during king tides. I've been down there twenty-plus years.
Because some of the letters that we have received, the correspondence, they are all full of. Praise for your designs and. That you have built in that idea.
My neighbors like me.
That's right. Yes. That's what it appears.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We do have Ms. Karen Wilkins on now available, so if you want to give her a few minutes, there's about ten minutes left on our presentation.
Yeah, I have one more question for Mr. McGregor. So you had mentioned something about flat roof and versus pitched roof. Is, did you consider having a pitched roof there because all the neighboring homes seem to have a pitched roof?
In my previous design, yes, I did have a pitched roof, but the elevations at that point in time, I was allowed, I believe, twenty-eight feet over the median high tide. Which would allow my house to have been up to about thirty-four, thirty-five feet in height. The breakaway area there at that location, if you ever look at Landis Shores, it's up on stilts. So their base flood elevation is about that level. So when FEMA changed their zoning. In that area, my project was in at that time, but obviously it wasn't grandfathered in, or otherwise we wouldn't be seeing a flat roof today.
Thank you. That's all right.
Thank you.
So is Karen? Karen Wilkins, is she available now?
She's on. It was one second. We're trying to figure out the audio. Okay. So Wilkins, let's try again. Testing. Testing. Let's try one more time. Testing. You know, we're having difficulties with the audio. Sorry.
Chair Gupta, I believe we've gotten sufficient input from the applicant to move on.
If we don't have any further questions for her. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we. Open up for. For the public comments. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not have any more speaker cards for this item. No.
Okay, so no speaker cards, so public comments are closed. Okay. So we move on to deliberations among the commissioners. Commissioner Ketchum.
Can we start deliberation? Okay. I mean, overall, I like the project. I think it's well designed. I just want to touch on something that Mr. McGregor said, as far as sea level rise. That you've seen, you've noticed, or. You can predict the height, king ties and all that. I really don't think that's what we're talking about sea level rise. I mean, we normally have. You know, the ties high and low. But I think we're talking about projection once. You know, the. The ice caps melt and all that, and more water will increase the sea level. And that's what we're talking about in projection in fifty or a hundred years. But overall, I don't think you're there any time soon, so. Therefore, I think it's, you know, it's feasible that you should get your permit. And move forward with your project, so I am going to. Support.
Commissioners Saranokwak?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Hansel?
I think it's also a well-designed. Plan. I'm in favor of approving this at this moment.
I'm in favor of approving this at this moment.
Thank you. It's a well-designed project. It seems to fit well in the neighborhood based on the rendering that I have seen. Coastside Design Review Committee likes it. I'm good with that. And and I think the the applicant is comfortable with building it there. So I'm in support of the project. So do I have a motion?
Could we get the recommendation? Or not? I'll make the motion that the planning commission approved the coastal development permit, design review, and nonconforming use permit or county file number P L N twenty seventeen three forty three by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval and attachment A of the staff report.
The second please.
Second.
Janet, could we have the roll call?
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Saranokwak?
Hi.
Chair Gupta?
Hi.
Thank you. Item passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we move on to the next item. Janet, could you please read that for the record?
Good morning, Commissioners.
We have item number three. Owner Anusha Talipene and David Jackson. I'm sorry about the pronunciation. Advocate Marius Deagonz, designer. File number P L N two zero two zero dash zero zero two five one. Location six thirty four Palomar Drive, Palomar Park, and our presenter today is Camille Young.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Gupta and Stad.
Good morning.
The project site is located at six three four Palomar and is shown in the slide. The aerial is shown to the left and a picture from the street is shown to the right. The site is sloped quite a bit with a street above it and a street below it. This is a rendering from the architectural plans of the design of the building. It's a four thousand two hundred and forty nine square feet, three-story residence. The parcel is about eighteen thousand square feet. Project access is through a driveway, which I'll show on the next slide, which goes through six three six Palomar Drive as well as a vacant parcel. The project involves eight hundred and eighty cubic yards of cut and ninety cubic yards of fill and the removal of two significant trees, and it's located within the R one S ninety one Design Review District. As you can see in this slide, there's going to be a long driveway through the two properties that I had listed. It's going to be an improved gravel driveway approaching the project site and then a concrete portion of the driveway, then the house. The proposed septic system is located uphill. And the area in the lower part of the parcel is generally remains undeveloped. The parcel does contain quite a few trees. And the trees shown on the left plan are the trees that would be removed. They're located within the setback. And those would would conflict with development. The applicant had originally proposed for the removal of seven trees, and now it's down to two as well as one not significant tree. And they would replace these trees with three twenty-four inch oak trees in the same area, as well as three other oak trees for their down slope. You can see the floor plans here for the base floor, the first floor, and the second floor. Some renderings from the driveway from the street below. Material samples. Cross section showing how it's benched into the slope and how it's lower than the maximum height of the zoning district. So the Bayside Design Review Committee found that the project complies with the design review standards on October twenty six, twenty twenty two and complies in terms of materials and colors, pitched roofs, lighting, and general site planning with the minimize minimization of the alteration of natural topography and that it respects the privacy of neighboring houses and outdoor living areas and minimizes tree removal. The Bayside Design Review Committee required further reduction in the use of glass on the eastern and northern façades, which the project architect made those changes to the design as well as changes to the roof design, which have been included as condition three, but the design currently reflects those changes as well as minimizing the tree removal from seven significant trees down to two. The project complies with the requirements of the grading permit that the granting of the permit would not cause significant adverse effect on the environment, comply with grading regulations and the general plan. So per the standards, standard conditions of approval, the project would offhaul all of its excavated earth. It would not be left on site, and they would apply erosion control measures, limit grading during the wet season, which requires director approval and requires the project engineer to submit written certification that all grading has been completed in conformance with the approved plans and their own recommendations. Staff prepared an initial study negative declaration with a review period of twenty days. Staff received two comment letters, including a letter from the Palomar Park Owners Association. Most of the concerns had to do with land stability, drainage, house size and design, as well as the trees removed, as well as other concerns. The main concern is geology on this parcel. One of the comment letters from Denise Ania, a neighbor, says that the negative declaration underplays and leaves out critical information regarding the history of landslides directly adjacent to this parcel on and directly adjacent. And she references several letters which she had prepared a little while ago. And the reference letters which she had submitted include brief reviews of adjoining offsite properties with no enclosed maps and no mention of site-specific locations or this parcel number. She included a twenty twenty one Geo Report that does include a general geologic review of the subject site, but does not include any subsurface exploration or testing as done by the applicant's team. The applicant has submitted comprehensive site-specific reports, including subsurface exploration and testing for both the proposed residence and the proposed septic system. These reports have been reviewed by County Environmental Health for the septic, the location of the septic system, as well as the county geologist and the county's geotechnical engineer. We have an in-house geologist as well as Cottonshires Associates as our consultants, and they've been reviewed by both. So Stas' recommendation reflects that review. And specifically, I wanted just to to state that in terms of the report submitted, there was a report submitted in twenty twenty by the applicant, by Atlas Engineering, and the project Geo is with us today. There was a twenty fourteen supplemental geotechnical investigation report. There was a twenty thirteen geotechnical investigation. There was also a twenty twenty one report just on the septic system and how it affects the stability of the parcel, as well as a twenty twenty two letter from Atlas, the project Geo, reviewing the drainage of the project as well as the landscape irrigation of the project, making sure that the water associated with the project would not basically complies with his recommendations and that he is able still to conclude that the project is feasible. So the project Geo reports outline the particular characteristics of the project parcel, which includes a twenty seventeen landslide, which was slow-prepared and finalized with a county building permit in twenty nineteen. There are some areas of fill. And there's some undocumented grading as well. And the project Geo states that development is feasible from a geotechnical standpoint, that the undocumented fill in the proposed house development area will be mitigated by the grading and the proposed retaining walls. They state that the fill along the proposed driveway should be treated in accordance with the recommendations for grading and retaining wall recommendations presented in their report. And they provide supplemental recommendations to accommodate design and construction of the proposed swimming pool, which is incorporated into the structure of the house. They proposed specific recommendations, which have been included in mitigation measures nine and ten of the negative declaration, which include mitigation of the undocumented fill, treatment of fill along the proposed driveway, close coordination between the project geotechnical consultant in the design of the foundations, retaining walls, drainage systems, landscape irrigations system. And also, they require this middle of an updated geotechnical report with supplemental recommendations at the building permit stage. So overall, this project would benefit in terms of its foundation design and retaining wall design would benefit the overall stability of the site. Another issue was hydrology that was brought up in the negative, the comments to the negative declaration. Miss Ania asserted that groundwater and springs were the basis of the instability of the parcels. And then based on subsurface exploration and testing that was done by the Geo team, it could not, it does not support evidence that there does not, there is no evidence to support a conclusion that pervasive springs exist on the project parcel. Concerns regarding trees with the initial proposal of the seven, removal of the seven significant trees. As I had said, that's been reduced down to the two in the setback that will be replaced with three twenty-four inch box oak trees. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission accept the initial study negative declaration, approve the design review permit and grading permit, and make the findings and adopt the conditions of approval and attachment A. I wanted to note that the project architect is here today. The owners are here, the project civil and the project Geo, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Camille. Questions? Commissioner Ramirez?
No question at this time.
Commissioner?
No question.
Commissioners Ketchum?
Yeah, a couple of small things. So the site plan, the house plan show on the top floor. It shows bedroom two, three, and four. So where's bedroom number one? How many bedrooms are there?
I wish I could see the slide, but I can't. It's too small. The project architect is here.
All right, I'll wait for them. This is a minor thing. And then just a question. This is more about county regulations. You know, with all these windows and and the location of the house, it just, I just wondered, does the county have any? It's about bird strikes. Is there any county guidance on window treatments to reduce reduce bird mortality from window strikes?
There's particular treatment that you can add to windows?
Yes, no, I I am familiar with the concept, but we don't provide any guidance on that, not that I'm aware of.
Something else to think about. Okay.
The applicant may have thought.
All right, yeah, maybe when they, right, okay. Anyway. So this the sewer system, the leach field seemed to be, you know, integral to these concerns. And so I understand the neighborhood doesn't have sewer connection. Is that infeasible to ever install? I mean, it would seem like from everything that's been said, it would benefit from a sewer, you know. Sewer leaving the neighborhood works and whether they can. I mean, I don't know the scope of this lack, whether it's a small area, whether it's feasible or or not.
Yes, you know, off the top of my head, I don't know the distance of this site from the closest sewer main. Yeah, but that's something that I can look into while you guys deliberate, see if I can't get an answer.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Commissioners Hansen?
Good morning. Yeah, I did go out to the site and looked at it. And I did read all the letters about people's concerns about the geology and stuff like that. So be assured that I have read that. The one question which I don't know if we do know, but what's the fire risk in this neighborhood? Because we're driving through it, it reminded me a lot of the Oakland Hills. And particularly when I went down the dead end street, Los Correos or whatever it is. I had a backup. There's no turnaround there, you know. And then I realized, you know, if there was a fire, I don't know which direction even to go out of that neighborhood. So do we have an assessment of the fire risk? I know we're just beginning to ask those type of questions and
I believe it's in the wildland urban interface zone in which that area is required to have fire-rated exterior materials, which would be required at the building permit stage. So just use of stucco and
So the cement site. So there is some consideration for the fire risk. And how about evacuation? Is there any plans or people like me who were in the neighborhood say, how do I get out of here in a fire?
Oh, we do know that the project was reviewed by the fire department.
I, yeah.
But as a as a regional evacuation, how it's access to this parcel is fine, but overall evacuation. I don't have the answer.
Yeah, because those windy roads, you can get disoriented real quick if you're not familiar with the neighborhood. I just wanted to know. Thank you. No more questions.
Question I had was about the landslide in the past in this area. Should I wait for the applicant?
Oh, the project Geo, yes.
Okay, okay, they get answered there. Okay, okay, so I'll wait a bit for that. Thank you. So if there are no more questions for the staff at this time, we did say the applicant is here, right?
Yes, he's prepared a presentation.
Okay. So please state your name and you have fifteen minutes.
Good morning. My name is Morris DeGans. I'm the associate at Amazon's I think.
So there were some difficulties with sharing the presentation, but actually Camille did a great job on. You can actually have us sign up as well on the site. So Camille has described the project very well and discussed several of the concerns. Geotechnical hydrology, so with our consultants, so refer them to ask any question related to that. We did also share some extra randoms. We actually prepared a few more from the uphill neighbor. He was concerned when he came to us in regards to his view. We did our 3D model, photo montage of his view from his bedroom. And he actually is coming to terms that the view is actually not disturbing or his view is not disturbed by our proposal. And then we also took another image from the street view that actually shows an image uphill because the concerns from some neighbors were that this is quite a prominent site and that we're building had too much glass. So we actually had a photo overlay as well, which actually shows that it's fairly visible from the street signs. And we placed our house or the project in the center of the property because of the rich field uphill and because of the history, history of the landslide on the bottom of the property. That's why we kept the bottom untouched. In regards to the bedrooms, originally we did have an extra bedroom, but because of the septic system capacity, we actually reduced one bedroom and we haven't changed the lighting in the project. So we do have three bedrooms. Yes, and in regards to the glass, originally we had flat roofs, lots of glass. Some concerns from the neighbors was that it was too modern. In the design review committee or design review, we changed that, we changed the house from stucco to siding. And the siding will be a material which is called longboard, which is an aluminum extrusion. This way, there is no fire hazard in regards to the wildfires, potential activities in that. Every eaves that we have will be faced with backboard, which is a no combustible material. This way, again, to prevent any explosion fire. For the glazing, we are looking into treatments that prevent birds flying into the glass. And that will be supplemental to the building. If you have any other questions, I'm going to answer them. Otherwise, I will go to our.
Commissioner Ketchum, did you want to ask anything more on the bird glazing?
I don't know if the owner is concerned about this. I'm just, it's not necessary to answer that. About bird strikes on the windows.
So our, so I don't know, I cannot speak for my clients, but we do a lot of projects with a lot of glass and we do notice that the treatments of the glass will help and mitigate bird strikes.
I would just encourage that. I would encourage them to consider that. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez?
And no additional questions. Thanks.
No questions.
No questions. So I had question about the landslides in the past. Were there, were there any property damage because of that? And how long ago was that?
I would like to refer to Joel Baldwin, our geotechnical engineer of this project.
Okay, okay. All right. And, and are you aware of what was done for fixing that or would that?
Joel will be.
Would he be the, would he be the right person? Okay. Let me see if there was anything else that. And you mentioned that you reduce the glass sidings on your design.
Correct. Originally, we had about a 20 foot span of glass and reduced it to eight feet sections.
Okay. And, and the glass is also like something that but you, of course, wanted the design such that it cannot be seen inside. But but there was no concern about the neighbors. Once you reduce the amount of glass.
That is correct. And the image from the bottom view actually showed that there won't be any privacy issues from the.
Privacy issues. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Chair Gupta, while Mr. Baldwin approaches the mic, I wanted to respond to Commissioner Ketchum's question regarding sewer service. The site's approximately a half a mile or more away from the Emerald Lake Hills sewer district. So it's not currently within an area that's eligible to receive services. Expanding those services to serve this and other parcels in Palomar Park, I think is probably unlikely and many years away if it were to occur because the area has been primarily built out. There are very few vacant parcels as being the one of them. And I think most of them have, are of adequate size to be served by septic system. So I think it's unlikely that municipal sewer service will be available at the site in the near future.
Thank you.
Good morning, civil writers. My name is Joel Baldwin. I'm a principal engineering geologist with Atlas Technical Consultants out of San, San Ramon. I'm in the Pacific office. May I start with a general statement about the site geology so that we can begin with the framework, come down onto the issue of landslides? The site represents a, an intensely complex geologic environment that's caused by plate tectonics over the past 180 million years. Where plates were subducting beneath one another along the west coast. Basically, you can kind of imagine trying to shove dirt under, under the, under the door. It's just sweeping off materials, placing it, fragmenting it and distributing it randomly. And then 20 million years ago, we then introduced the strike slip faulting tectonics along the west coast here associated with the San Andres Fault, which resulted in the condition of the, of the coast ranges and the mountains that we see on the site and throughout the peninsula. The site itself is underlaid by a geologic unit named the Franciscan Complex, which is an integral part of the initial subduction process. So it consists, composed of fragmented materials, marine deposits and volcanic deposits that have been metamorphosed over the past 180 years. The, and the random, in, in the site area, we have Franciscan sandstone. Franciscan sandstone ranges from weak to hammer ringing hard, if you know what I mean by that, when you hammer it, they're rocking the hammer rings. So we determine geology hardness, very resistant. That's what underlies the existing building site of our, of our, of our properties. We are of the applicant's properties. We are on a graded spur ridge that extends from the edge of the cut slope on to the south on Palomar Park to the and to the north to join the valley in which the adjoining property on Los Ceros is located. We have in the, we, through all of the investigations that Camille mentioned, we've characterized the site as being underlined by favorably oriented Franciscan sandstone. It's competent, but albeit locally graded with some presence of fill on the outward edges of the flat area where they plan to build. The, what I mean by favorable is that landslides often occur along bedding planes that are sloping out of the hillside. In this, in this location, the bedding is sloping into the hillside. We consider that to be a favorable condition. That's for big deep seated landslides. Whereas on the adjoining property, from reading the literature and seeing exposures and air photo interpretation, the adjoining property on Los Ceros is underlaid by a different earth material. Mudstone, siltstone, claystone, which is a softened material that's been juxtaposed against this hard sandstone. And it's separated generally by either fault or some sort of a shear zone caused by that plate tectonic process that fragmented the sandstone against the siltstone, claystone. That's why the hillside from the south side of Palomar comes up to very steeply, probably a 20 foot high vertical cut. It's intact. Given indication of performance of that sandstone, comes across the side as a slight hill and then dips down into the valley of the swell of the adjoining property. The reason that that, that area is a lower area is because of the rock is weaker and it's, we have differential erosion occurring there. And it's been exacerbated by years of uncontrolled drainage being derived from the street above. And also graded undocumented grading is prolific through that neighborhood. This commonly, when, and associated with these faults that tend to juxtapose differing rocks, we have occurrence of groundwater seepage occurring along that zone. And it's not necessarily a groundwater table. It's oftentimes perched water derived from surface water infiltration from undrained locations like the roadway above draining onto the hillside into that swell. I'm afraid I forgot the name of that street at the top of our property, but that street drains runoff right directly onto, into the swell. And it's happened, it's been, it's been doing that for as long as that property's been developed, nearly 100 years. The landslides we, that we, that have occurred there have generally occurred in the weak silk, siltstones, claystone, mudstone rock. And that's not, it's not a continuous, continuous mass of material that extends across the property like you'd see in the Colorado Rockies where you see those beautiful beds that extend forever. These, these things are, these pieces of earth material are bordered by fractures, shears and faults that tend to allow the, or tend to direct water in particular directions. And it's been, it's my judgment that the water that's occurring, the seepage that's occurring on that neighboring property, which has induced multiple landslides on that property and is related directly to infiltration of runoff. And there could be some contribution of, of, of natural spring conditions. But there's no evidence of that based on the air photo work that I did all the way extending all the way back to Edgewood Road. The landslide that occurred, there was a landslide that occurred. Well, let me back up. Los Ceros was cut parallel to contour into that hillside, leaving the slope like this with a very steep face on board. We call that a cut slope. The, and that cut slope was, is well beyond the, the gradient that you'd want to have for that kind of material. But back in the day, those things weren't taken into consideration. It's basically maybe 50, 60 degrees and locally vertically. And so that's, that's an undercut condition. And when you induce seepage into, into the weaker soil, it tends to creep and creep, and then eventually it fails. And if you've got superimposed on that uncontrolled runoff from the development itself, you exacerbate the, the issue of slope instability. It's my judgment based on the work that we've seen. I've worked in that area since the eighties. I've worked on the downhill side of Los Ceros doing development work for residences in, in Palomar Park directly across from my site. And it's my judgment that what hap, what's, what happened there was they graded, they graded the weaker material, which is a clay that occupies that swell. And again, the reason it's a swell is because it's a weaker material. It can't sustain steep slopes. So it just continues through the road. It starts like this and then eventually rolls back. The, and the, and, and basically the combination of oversteeped slope and based on the, the age of development and the, and the configuration of that pad, it looked like it had, and, and you know, potential for ponding water. So there was exacerbation from water seepage from man's, man's induction. We also had.
We're not wrapping it up.
Okay, we also had a landslide on our, on the lower part of our property where we have that clay material juxtaposed against the hard sandstone. And that was also judged to be associated with uncontrolled runoff, ponding of the grading up there, bringing it runoff and failure of the cut slope. So the basis for our agreement that the site is feasible for development is based upon numerous borings where we found no groundwater in the, in the, in the, in the rock. Water in the Rockies, it runs along fractures and stuff. We didn't get, we didn't find any of that information in our borings. And so where, we, we believe that there is a separate issue going on in this swell, which is geologically sensible. And our property is completely different environments geologically. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? So at this time, we'll open it up for public speakers. Do we have?
We do.
We have public.
Our first call up to Mark Helsel. And you have five minutes. I'll start the timer and let you know when your time's almost up.
Thank you, Chairman Gupta and Commission. And I got to say, it's nice to be back in front of you in person after our hiatus for COVID. I'm Mark Heslop. I'm with CHS Development Group and we have been asked by the homeowners in the area to look at the process here. There's been a lot of technical data, most recently a March 7th, 2023 report from Balance Hydrology. And I, as a former planning commissioner myself, am always crazy when somebody submits a detailed technical report the day before the hearing. It's unfair to the commission and it's unfair to the applicant who doesn't have an opportunity to respond. But with that said, the problem is it's in, in the record, it's part of the record and it's a bell that can't be unrung. So I think today's consideration, you need to look at it. It's, the authors of that report are here and will speak later, so I'm not going to go into the technical details. One of the problems in all of these situations and Palomar Park is not a great place to build. No sewers, the roads are substandard. It is very typical of the unincorporated San Mateo County residential areas, similar to Devonshire Canyon up on skyline, et cetera. And the, the, the problem is that these places were, were built without meeting current standards. Most of the septic systems in the area are 20, 30, 40 years old. I get a couple of calls every year about people wanting to annex into San Carlos so that they can hook up to the sewer because their septic systems are failing. And they will continue to fail as, as time goes on. And that plays into what I think is the problem with you certifying this environmental document today. Mr. Baldwin gives a very good, and I've known, I've known Joel for 40 years. I've used him as a geologist myself. He's excellent. The trouble is, is that the, the, the conversation was site specific. It's about the site, it's about the site, it's about the site. We have to take a broader view because of the drainage problems, the landslide problems and the ever growing problem with septic systems that are either failing or aging. And I think that there has to be a broader environmental review and I think the Balance Hydraulics Report really stresses that. The laws of physics don't obey those nice little property lines we draw on maps. And when we talk about the slope next door and the slope of the site, it's the same hillside. There may be differences in certain rock formations on part of it, but it's one hillside that has to be analyzed as one hillside. In 2017, Miss Chalobah's Ina, Ina's slope fell and they repaired it to the tune of six figures. The owners of the development parcel here did not participate in that repair. And as a result, there are certain devices, keyways, drainage, et cetera, that's in that slope that are very sensitive and are the subject of some of the letters you've seen and some of the issues you'll hear today concerning the balance hydraulics. um uh concerning the Balance Hydraulics Report.
Sir, you have one minute left if you want to stop.
Thank you. I will. I'll do my best. Um, I think the key here today is in light of the balance report, which creates a very significant factual distinction uh among the the professionals. I think there's a higher level of uh environmental review that is necessary. Does it have to involve all of Palomar Park? Probably not, but I think it does have to include the entire watershed that drains through this. And not only is are we concerned with the capture of the water and drainage on the site, but where does it go? Uh, goes into bio swales. When the bio swales are full, where does the water go? And it goes downhill. It goes through substandard drainage canals. There's no curbs or gutters or storm drains in this entire community. So I think we need um a higher level of of um uh environmental review before we can certify the environmental document. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Now we have Alan Killick followed by Mark Wosner. Once again, you'll have five minutes.
My name's Alan Killick and I am president of the corporation that fixed the landslide on Denise Anaya's property, which is the adjacent property, six thirty four Palomar. I've heard discussions about is there water there? Is there not water there? I'm here to tell you that that I fixed the landslide. And there is a quite a copious amounts of water on the Anaya property. That that water is evident today in the outfalls of the subdrains that were installed during the landslide repair. The current plan that I see for six thirty four uh Palomar Road has a leach field that is within twenty five feet of some of the subdrains that were installed during the repair process uh at the Anaya property landslide. That's not standard policy to to install a leach field above and adjacent to landslide repair and land and subdrains in that landslide. I believe that I I don't know how much water is going to be admitted from the from the leach field, but any water that's induced on top of a wet slope or into a wet slope can't be beneficial. With that said, I'd hope you reconsider where the leach field is placed on that on that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Our next call on Mark Wosner, followed by Barry Hatch.
Good morning. Hi, Steve. So my name's Mark Wosner. I'm a hydrologist. I was schooled in in forestry soils and hydrogeology. And I've been a consulting hy- hydrologist since the early eighties. Co-founder of Balance Hydrologics Incorporated nineteen eighty eight. I've had a very long career, a very interesting and long career in in complex problems like this and challenges. I I do apologize for the late delivery of the our our report. We we actually did a a study for Denise Anaya back in twenty 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 fourteen during the middle of the extreme drought. It was it was one of the driest years on record. And this is for a completely different purpose, but we did an in-depth spring protection um study uh which which looked at the persistence and water quality of of the spring that that's on the parcel adjoining this the project parcel. So we we looked, we focused on on and then she she called us back for this just to help her understand the complexities of this situation. Um, and and I I have a few um uh conclusions here. Let me get through. Uh, let's see. But I I do want to say that um we've we've looked at the we've looked at the site during the extreme drought. We've also recently revisited the site now during a a wet year and and a very wet year with very high rainfall. Um, so we have a good perspective of of the 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 seasons. And we've focused on on these three parcels. So there's the parcel three eighty, which is the project parcel. But joining that, there's three ten. And then there's the one eighty. Those are the three parcels and a lot of the the spring, the spring and the slide activity is is on that center parcel. And that is um um so 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 let me explain a few things about that 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 hillside. It it is the entire hillside is in in that area is a slide prone area. It's it's very clearly a slide prone area. And there there are there are areas that are more more subjective to that. Um, but the the entire area, and that's partly because of the 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 soils, they're very clay soils that have developed on on the Franciscan. And there is a well-developed uh beach horizon. Uh, there's there's a lot of clay in in the lower part of the soil that's sitting on top of the that that has developed on top of the Franciscan. Um, and and this this is in this with steep slopes is is problematic for slides. Um, in addition to that, the topography, it's a steep topography and and these parcels are situated on on the hillside um where groundwater discharge. It's it's a groundwater discharging area in 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 a broader concept and and Barry will talk a little bit more about this. Um, so the combination of steep soils, clay soils and ground groundwater discharge area creates landslides. How much? One minute, yeah. So what what we found um with what the let me skip to the conclusion here then with one minute. We found that from our studies um that groundwater is discharging from the Franciscan sandstone and 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 perhaps on on top of that shale. Um, and we see this, we we know this from from this from the persistence of the spring and and there's also a gully that's persistent persistently flows perennial um right in that area, the vegetation, the the water quality was was a key to to understanding this of the conductivity and and the the mineral composition of 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 the water quality, the springs and and the gully. So it and and finally, I I would like to make sure that that the county sticks very closely to 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 its ordinances and not not grant uh exemptions. It's very important. This is an area that you you must stick to your to your ordinance. It's it's very clear of that. And the fact that applicants' geotechnical report includes a plate number two of which we put in in our appendancy there that 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 requires mitigation for landslides in in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next call on Barry Hatch, followed by Dave Ne.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your hearing. I'm Barry Heck. I'm a registered geologist, engineering geologist, and hydro geologist in California. And I've been having fun for fifty five years. Uh, you uh you have heard Mark explain our history of the site. We looked at the site on Miss Anaya's a request prior to development of a repair. And our our work included water quality analysis. So we have a fingerprint of of the water which comes out of the slide. We haven't had an opportunity to go back over the last week or two to the site and look at it under very different conditions. Not the three-year drought we began with in twenty fourteen, but rather the kind of year that we have have had this far. And I do apologize for the late submittal. I will say that finding a hydrologist this this year is almost as hard as finding a roofer. We wrote lots of reports, walked the site and the nearby area and conclude, just like Joel Baldwin's firm, that the area is Franciscan, composed of chaotic blocks. And those blocks uh have water which comes between them. That water is the water which has generated landslides. It's uh way above the local area, and it's quite distinct because it it is slightly salty. We found that the quality of that water has not changed from the dry year to other present years, so it has not been appreciably affected by recharge. But that all of the other slopes have recharged with the the amount of rainfall that we had. The quality of water with the characteristic signature of the chaotic block pool can be found in the canyon at at the end of Los Seros Road, which is where Commissioner Hanson lacked the turnaround. And it's also found beneath the applicant's property. Including the far corner. At the corner of the Palomar Road of Los Seros. So the waterfront spring, which is what generates the landslide spreads out in a large triangle. And that is new information. I the commission had a uh third-party review of the uh Joe Baldwin's work and his firm and that third-party review asked for additional information. Which they they pleaded to drill down as far as it took to find where the ground occurred.
Your time's up.
So in summary, I would say one, we have 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 a pretty good idea what the stability impairing water is. Secondly, it is recharged by all of the septic tanks in the area. This would not happen if the whole neighborhood were not on septic. And uh three uh there is important new information here which warrants additional looking for that the trees near the property line are important septic stability elements and had been identified as such by a lot of prior uh reports.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll next have Dave Neal, followed by Denise Anaya.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am a resident of Palomar Park. I'm also trained as an architect and that's a planner. And the reason I'm here, I'm also a member of the Palomar Park Owners Association. Uh, this is a very, as you can see, prominent and dramatic site. Should mine is the yellow presentation. I sent. So this is uh Denise Anaya's, I think. It's okay. While she finds a presentation, I'll just go through this very quickly. Um, it is a very beautiful, very prominent site. It's also a very precarious site. And as one of the probably last sites that can be looking at being developed in Palomar Park, there's a reason why I believe it hasn't been developed up until now. It's technically very challenging. You've got the height limits pushing down. You've got the setback lines pushing in. You've got the water table pushing up effectively on this house in a way that's not ordinary. Um, so as such, I know the architect and designers have been, you know, going through quite a few iterations. I think it's absolutely gotten better. But urge that it needs to go another level of standard of care as an unusual aspect uh in, you know, per kind of sequence standards. Um, so it has had successive earth landslides. And we went on actually Google Earth out of all places and looked at the history. And we found the history back to nineteen forty eight, and we counted at least six or seven major slides, uh including even this year recently, it's starting to slide again to the west of the site. So I think we're not here to stop the project whatsoever. We love to welcome new family into the neighborhood, but we want to make sure it's done in a very safe way uh that not only safeguards the new family moving in uh because there have been two houses that have been right next to this, directly next to that slid the lane house nineteen fifties and then in nineteen eighty uh the O'Neill House. And so they actually slid onto Los Seros Road. Uh, the two thousand seventeen slide was a hundred and seventy foot long slide. It's not a small slide that sometimes you see more driving along. It's a very, very complete slide. And it's just the top three of this area, the geology, all coming together at this very, very special site. So I urge you and encourage you to reconsider uh taking action to certify this mitigation of the NAGDEC. Uh, and to look postpone this and gather more information for the best for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, lastly, call on Denise Anaya.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Denise Anaya. I'm the landowner at seven thirty eight Loma Court and also the landowner of the vacant parcel known as Zero Los Seros. So I wanted to start off with just a few pictures so you understand the magnitude of these slides. Uh, the first picture here is of applicant's property. This slide happened in two thousand eight. They repaired the slide. Spring water is still flowing out of the slide and affecting downhill residents. At the second picture, maybe go up a couple. Another one more. The very beginning. There you go. Uh, this picture is two thousand seventeen. This is the landslide on the seven thirty eight Loma Court parcel in the Zero Los Seros. You can see how close it came to my house. It damaged my house foundation. Um, as David said, the landslide was over a hundred and seventy five feet long. Encompassed the entire Zero Los Seros parcel. We have a measurement. It's about twenty feet. The pair is about twenty feet from the property line of the applicant's property. Water from the spring. Water from the spring from this repaired slide flows prolifically. Three hundred sixty-five days a year out of these drains on Los Ceros. Go ahead to slide three. So I wanted to really focus on the CEQA process. So the CEQA, the statute of public resources code and the guidelines in are in the California Code of Regulations, and they're very clear. An abundance of new and old public historical and professional information has been presented, has been presented. And it's more than a fair argument, which is needed, that a focused EIR is requested. Two houses have been destroyed. Two houses have been damaged. There's been over six other landslides. The roadway, county-owned roadway of Los Ceros has slid over three times. There's infrastructure owned and maintained by the county Public Works Department that also collects water, spring water. There's new information from Balance Hydrologics and you heard from my engineer and contractor, Alan Killick. So that CEQA regulation, section fifteen oh six four F one four five. So go ahead and go to the next slide. So section fifteen oh six four G, there is a multitude of discrepancies, obviously, and disagreement from experts on the potential impacts such as contamination from the leach fields proposed exacerbating existing landslides, creation of new landslides, earthquake liquefaction in used by earthquakes. Which you'll see on the hazard map done by the California Geological Service in two thousand eighteen. And we're in that zone, the applicant's parcel is in that zone, as is surrounding parcels. So any parcel, for the most part, that's had a landslide that has underground water is subject to a potential earthquake-induced landslide. Information submitted by the applicant and their project professionals of onsite, offsite conditions such as distance to the leach field and my subsurface drains, the previous landslides, cut banks, fifty percent slopes, onsite perched water, spring water drainage is not consistent with the existing conditions. And there's been significant environmental information, which is lacking or not disclosed, such as previous slides on the project property prior to two thousand fourteen. Previous multiple landslides on Los Ceros Road. The infrastructure like I discussed, that is owned by the county and maintained by the County of San Mateo. The two thousand, I talked about the two thousand eighteen hazard map, sizing hazard map. I think that is extremely important. Go ahead to the next slide, please. Yeah. Lead agency must take account for the whole action of the project, including onsite, offsite, direct, indirect, operational and cumulative effects. They have not done this. There's no data from the applicant that has been utilized on the project regarding onsite, offsite, operational or cumulative effects by the hydrogeologist or a geomorphologist. It's clear spring water is a problem here, not just soils. The applicants, professionals have sought no information from me or my my neighbors or my consultants regarding any existing onsite subsurface drainage on any of my properties. And there's extensive onsite subsurface drainage. Go ahead to the next slide, please. Lead agencies have a responsibility to consider views and information from the public and from outside professionals. Like to slide seven. So careful judgment on the part of the public agency is required. The unique characteristics of this project, the onsite and the offsite conditions with the vulnerable attributes which pose a risk to health and welfare and a magnitude of other environmental impacts. The mitigations outlined in the NAG deck do not warrant careful judgment. They do not reflect the lessening. They're not specific criteria. And in no way reflect lessening of any of the potential impacts. Um, side eight, please. The initial initial studies are intended to really contain first level of detail of detailed focus. They aren't as focused as an EIR. The public has provided high level of expert detail, historical information, including new information of current offsite and onsite conditions recently made available. For all these reasons, I urge the planning commission not to certify the mitigated negative declaration and stay in compliance with the CEQA statute and process. I also wanted to just state that this isn't Cal Fire, very high fire severity zone. And we would have had more experts who would have been able to participate in this meeting and neighbors, but the discontinuation of the Zoom-enabled feature has really caused an issue with some other of the folks. So, thank you very much.
So much. That was our last speaker.
Hi.
Please state your name.
Yeah, sorry. My name is Warren Goodrich and my family own six twenty-four Palomar Drive, which is just below the the building site and we're actually, the Goodrich family has been there for eighty-one years. We've got the same property and so the history, my father, my uncle grew up there. My grandparents owned it initially. And I think all the comments that have been made, and I think it's important to emphasize Mr. Manowitz's point that the last site, this might be the last site in Palomar Park, which is developed a hundred years ago. And why was this site not developed? And I know points were made about technical difficulties and stuff, but I think it's just simply there's water there. And when my dad was a boy, there was no hedge hatchy. There was no, you know, the water coming in from, you know, across cow water all the way into Crystal Springs. So they actually got the water from wells that were in this hillside. That's how the community was able to be built and developed. It's a very historic community, how it was built and just I think a lot of care needs to be given and respect to that history that nothing was ever built here for a reason, because people could look and see in the summer, it's green, there's grass. And I think that just points to the real careful care that needs to be taken. I know a lot of care has been taken. And I want to reemphasize, it's not about, you know, NIMBY, we want people, someone to build a builder, if it can be done safely. But maximum care needs to be taken here. And I just yeah, that's for the sake of everyone in the community and run off into Eden Park and it's just there's there's real issues here that need to be carefully considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody else who would like to speak at this time? If nobody else in here, then we would like to close the public hearing.
The Project U and the Project Civil would like to respond to the comments regarding the new hydraulics report that was submitted.
Please go ahead. Please state your name so that we have it for our record.
Hi, my name's Alex Henson. I'm a civil engineer with Lee and Brace Engineering. So just quickly, I wanted to backtrack on a couple items to go through on a couple questions. If you bring up the site plan again. There was a couple of comments made about the location of the leach field. So I just wanted to point out, we have reviewed the improvements for the landslide that occurred on the vacant lot. So we know about the slopes. We know about the location of the subdrain, the number four. One of those. That one, yeah. So you can see on screen here, the proposed septic system above the residence that they can lock with the landslide that did occur, that has the issues with most of the water is on the left. So you can see on the far left here, there's a note for our distance for our fifty feet. So we are well over the twenty-five-foot requirement, which is the county requirement for distance to subdrainage. Those faint lines on that left-hand side of the property are actually the expansion system. So those aren't proposed for construction at this time. That's a county requirement to provide space for future development if necessary. The actual proposed system is well over a hundred feet away from that property, which is the dark lines on the right-hand side. You know, in the reports that were provided, there are a couple of letters and reports that we just wanted to highlight, one actually being from Jeff Lee of Lee and Brace Engineering. He reviewed surface review of the vacant lot. And surface review of only our lot. There was no geotechnical study done for his review. So we were able to accomplish the county guidelines for the proposed location of the septic. And I think as Joel has mentioned, all of the borings and additional borings that were required by the county above and beyond what's been normally required proved that there was no groundwater on our site that would affect the septic system or the building location. We've also addressed the concerns about the slide for the fill that was addressed in the location of the house and how that will be mitigated. As for the connection, there is a storm drain connection at Los Ceros. So the county requires us to maintain the same level of runoff from the site. So you can see kind of just at the top of the building location, there's actually a retention pipe that will mitigate the water collected from the building and that transfers it down right into the collection system that's existing there. So there's no additional surface runoff being created by the property other than what's already been happening. So we've mitigated those measures and I just wanted to kind of re-highlight those. Now, so if you have any other civil-related questions, I'm here to answer additional questions.
Thank you. Did anybody have questions? Thank you.
Steve. So we've got battling geologists and late information. Has the late information been reviewed by your team or our geologists?
Not to my knowledge. No, I don't think so. I'm saying getting a negative from the planner. So the answer is no.
They've been briefly reviewed, but just
I'm sorry.
We were just handed the report, but the Project U and the Project Civil have briefly reviewed it.
I mean, there's very specific things that have been pointed out. Were those considered beforehand? And this is just rehashing something we already know, or this is new information?
Without looking at the report, I don't know if there is new information. However, I can say that the concerns about lands, landslide, land stability, presence of high groundwater seeps in the springs. That has been an issue that's been carefully looked at throughout this process. So the concerns that have been expressed by the neighbors are not new concerns. And I think there is agreement on all sides that this is a highly constrained site that requires the utmost care in terms of ensuring long-term stability and the safety of both the residents of this property and the adjoining properties. And, you know, our assessment is the level of care required to deal with this property and these issues have been appropriately applied at the planning stage. The county's peer reviewing geotechnical firm, Cotton Shires and Associates, have indicated their satisfaction with the analysis that's been performed at the planning stage. They have provided recommendations and asked for additional details to be provided at the building stage to make sure that, you know, all the i's or dottas and t's are crossed, but from a, at the planning level, they have determined this is feasible to be safely developed. And that includes after an assessment of the issues related to stability and the presence of water on the site.
We can't rule out there's information here we hadn't considered.
I cannot rule that out.
Okay. Thank you.
I may. I, I think you're right. There are maybe some things that they have brought up that we, we were not considering. But I also concern as to why they waited so long to give us that information, knowing that we were going to have this meeting. And that information should have came to us with more time to go over it. At this time, I'm going based on the report that we have. And I, to me, I think that the applicant has met the requirements of the county with regards to geological engineering, anything that pretends to this. And so for me, that's enough. But I'll leave it up to you guys to think about. Your, your stance on this.
Are we waiting to be recognized or?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, I did have time to read Cotton Charge report yesterday and it really got my attention. Cotton, not Cotton Shires, the balance hydrologics. I said Cotton Shires because it was the part here. I just want to read you. Inadequate response to third-party review. So it says Cotton Charge's review plainly asked how much more water from site drainage and the leach field will be put into the hillside? In which direction will it flow? How deeply will it flow, given the hillside containing much water? Will the additional water in the grading for the structures affect the stability of the house or adjoining lots and structures? The applicant was asked to drill as deep as necessary and conduct tests to get the needed data. Atlas responded with a twelve-page letter, which basically did not answer these questions. The, I mean, this hydrology and geology, it's not my field, but we didn't, in the, with the NAG deck, we didn't actually see these reports. They were talked about. And the same in the staff report. But here, this is the first time we hear from the actual report. And like I say, it really got my attention. I I'm not completely calmed by this, that they've satisfied the county requirements and we need to look at this no further. Somehow I just you know, you there's so much at risk here and you know, short of having a sewer connection instead of the septic or delete the swimming pool, maybe. The I just surely something could be done on this parcel with, but I just don't feel like I don't feel confident that the CEQA requirement that this review has been adequately met.
Through the chair, are you going to call on any, anyone else for us?
Do you want to add anything more, Commissioner?
No, that's fine. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner. From yeah, I, I went through the reports, the presentation, and I heard the neighbors long-term neighbors and, and some of the some of them are really experts in geology, in hydrology, which I'm not. But I could see their concerns. Then we have the correspondence that came through. I don't know if I'm missing any of the correspondence or, or any of the these additional reports here, but whatever I saw. I, I, I'm not entirely sure if there's more, more investigation or more thinking that needs to be done from applicants' perspective to make sure that this is a safe project to be done. That's my thinking at this point.
If I may, it's not usually my habit to inject myself without being asked a question, but I, I think it might be necessary to reorient the discussion to what the true issue is when considering a Nag Deck. I think it's tempting to view SEQA as a tool for evaluating whether or not a project is appropriate for a site. It is not. SEQA is a tool for evaluating what impacts a project will have on the environment. Not the other way around. Not a question of whether or not the environment is going to have impacts on the project. A question of whether or not the project as proposed is going to have impacts on the environment. And then at this stage with a Nag Deck, the question is whether or not there is substantial evidence presented that supports a fair argument that there will be an impact to the environment by the project that hasn't been adequately evaluated and mitigated against. And I'm not going to offer an opinion on the ultimate question of whether or not there is substantial evidence. Because I think we kind of need to figure out if there is a fair argument being raised about a potential impact that this project has on the environment. We should know what that is and not say simply, I don't know, or I don't feel comfortable, or there may be something else we're not considering. I think the question for the commission is, is there an argument raised by the commenters that an impact to the environment has not been adequately evaluated and addressed by mitigation? So I'll give an example. The existence of a spring in the, the, in the slope, whether or not there is a hydrological phenomenon underneath the, the, the dirt that is causing a thing to happen. Absolutely fascinating question, absolutely a relevant question for the engineers that have to design the project. Absolutely a concern for the people that ultimately have to live with the project that, that might eventually be constructed. But really from SEQUA's perspective, the question is whether or not putting a house there as proposed is going to have an impact on that spring, not the other way around. So I, I think there might be some question about whether or not the injection of effluent from a, a septic system is going to produce a significant impact to the hydrology of the existing hydrology of the natural environment, the unbuilt environment. And so that would be an example of something as to which there might be substantial evidence in support of a fair argument that we need to know exactly how much volume of water is going to be produced by a house constructed there and what the impact of that additional water coming from a water line, not coming from, you know, rain, rainwater or runoff, but coming from a water line and then going through a house and then going into the septic system, whether or not that is going to have a substantial impact on the environment, including potential increase to landslide risks. So in other words, I don't, I, I, I think that there might be a fruitful discussion about whether the, the commission believes it's necessary to further evaluate an argument that the house is going to have an impact on the environment as identified. But I don't think that it's productive to think in a more general term of, are there things about the site that we don't know or don't understand? It really is a focused question on whether or not the project as proposed might have an impact on the environment. And if someone is raising an argument that the existing environmental studies don't answer what that impact might be or whether it can be mitigated. So I offer that in case it's helpful to the discussion, but happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification on that. And if I go back on this, I, I believe that based on the, and the mitigations that we have on this report, I believe that it is adequate to move forward. But that's my, what I believe based on what the, the report that I read.
Chair. I was in agreement with Mr. Fox even before he said this. I did not see this as a SEQA question. I see this as a geology question and, you know, are, are we? Do we have enough information to shake? Yeah, this is appropriate, but it wasn't to me a secret question. And so that's where I am. So to me, the secret question is already off the table.
So are you saying that? Just on the, the grading permit, I guess, or whatever, that the, these issues have been adequately studied and that, that, that the project is safe to move forward with?
I think that's the question in front of me. I'm not saying I have enough information to make that judgment. But I don't see the impact. I don't see where when we do seek, we're looking at, does this impact the historical landslide from where the Indians were? Does this impact where all the eagles live? Does this impact? These are impacts to the environment. We're talking about, are we doing things that are to the safety of the community and the neighborhood? That, that's an engineering geology question. Not whether I need more information to understand the impact to the environment. I need more information is, are we safe to proceed?
I guess I thought that SEQA was, you know, they, they look at transportation, all that. It's like, you know, the environment will live on. I mean, if the landslide happens, the environment will adjust, you know, but it's just the people that it affects. So I, I mean, I don't know where I put my uncertainties about this project. But I have uncertainties about this project and I think especially this is in highlighted now where we've had flooding and, you know, from all these storms and all these things and, and people say, why was this project approved in such a dangerous place? How would the county do that? And, and now here I sit here and think, well, I don't know. How can we do this? It looks dangerous to me. I don't know how you refine that and put into an appropriate comment for the, but yeah.
With permission of the chair, I'm happy to respond.
Yeah. Is this a grading permit issue or where?
Yes, I, I believe it is. I, I think that when we approve grading permits, we need to find that the project's consistent with the general plan. And I think when you look at the general plan, you'll find policies related to the protection of public safety and the avoidance of geologic hazards that justify a close look at this issue as I think we've undertaken. But should the commissioners believe that further analysis is required to demonstrate this, this project meets those general plan policies? That is certainly within your prerogative to request.
If, if I may, I think well, I think I'm ready to make a motion. And now we either it passes or doesn't pass. And it can always be appealed to the board supervisors. So that's my take for that. So if you don't mind, I'm going to make a motion. The, the planning commission certified the initial study and mitigated negative declarations and approved the design review permit and grading permit by making the findings and adopting the conditions of approval in attachment A.
A second?
I'll go ahead and second. Turn on the mic. You turned it off.
I second.
Commissioner Hanson?
May.
Commissioner Ketchum?
No.
Commissioner Gupta?
No.
Commissioner Ramirez? Commissioner Serano Kwan? Thank you.
Now, I'm really open to have this continued as opposed to being a flat denial. You know, I like, you know, county came back and said, we have reviewed everything that was shown in this meeting and still come to the same conclusions. I would feel different.
So a question for Mr. Fox. So this motion failed for lack of support. We could do another motion, I believe, to continue or, yeah, right? To ask for any, any other motion is immediately in order. All right.
I think for example, further looking at the issues that were brought up with this latest report and maybe doing some further studies or maybe even modifying the house, maybe even deleting the pool. I mean, there were some specific comments in this balanced hydrologics about just the pool, the, the issues there. I mean, so yeah, I do agree that it, that it continue and send more information and hopefully some modifications or something.
Would you like to do a motion based on your comments?
I move that we continue this item to date uncertain. Do I need to say any more than that? Okay.
I'll second your motion.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Bye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Serano Kwan?
Hi.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Thank you. Your motion continues.
All right. Can I say something, you know, because I, I think, oh, I'm sorry, through the chair? Can I mention something?
Yes.
I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge everyone that now came, you know, to our first meeting after COVID. And also to, you know, like for Mrs. Janet, thank you for all the work that you've done. And I think we're like, kind of starting to learn all over. So, so, you know, we had a few glitches and we apologize for that. But going forward, I think we will fix some of those. All right. Thank you. That's what I want to say.
So does the first motion go down in the minutes or?
We'll, we'll make a note that a motion was made and failed two to three. Yeah.
Okay. And so we went the second.
Chair Gupta, now that we've concluded that item, I'm prepared to move on to the remainder of the agenda.
Okay, okay. I was still, my mind was still going through that.
Take your time, only when you're ready.
Yes. Thank you all for coming. Please go ahead, Steve.
Yes. So the commission's familiar with the correspondence that came in regarding item three today. There were some late submittals that came in and we'll make sure that you can receive all pieces of correspondence that came in prior to the hearing on this continued item. Some other emails that have come in have to do with the return to in-person meetings. And there's been a strong cry for accommodating remote participation by the public. And I will address that further in my director's report. So moving on to a study session for the next meeting, we do have a study session planned. As I mentioned, we'll be talking about our long-range work program and I look forward to getting the commissioner's feedback on that. The other item that is on the March 22nd meeting agenda is the lighting plan for Tanitas Creek Beach. Commission will recall that the coastal development permit was approved with a condition that required the lighting plan to return to the commission. Moving on to the director's report, I wanted to inform the commissioners that I did receive a follow-up email from the public speaker at our last meeting, let Miss Lane McWilliams. I provided a response to her in writing and provided her with the information she requested in terms of what's the timeframe for public comment and what's, I informed her that she has the ability to file an appeal after a decision letter is issued. The decision letter has not been issued and to the degree she's raised points that are relevant to our review, we will certainly consider them in our, before we issue a letter of decision. I'm sure you're all getting ready for the atmospheric river headed this way. It's, it's been a rough winter without a doubt and it's been demanding on county resources from a variety of fronts. As it relates to the planning and building department, we have had inspectors very busy conducting damage assessments for properties that are damaged. That's a service that we provide in the event private property is damaged, we, an inspector will go out and evaluate whether or not it's safe to return to those properties. The other, you know, interesting thing that's come up relates to failure of engineered drainage systems on private property. And so I, I think this is relevant to some of the issues that frequently come before the commissioners when concerns are expressed about the adequacy of the engineering systems on site. So in some instances, those systems may fail. And if they do, we go out and evaluate whether or not they were constructed in accordance with permit requirements and what if any improvements need to be made to those facilities. So that's another way we've been involved as well as just responding to emergencies. So I'm sure it's going to be an active weekend for us and I'll be happy to update you at the next meeting about what our experience was like. The other thing that I wanted to alert the commissioners to, if you haven't heard about it already, is because of the tragic shooting in Half Moon Bay that uncovered the concerning living conditions of the farm workers, the county has initiated a task force to work with agricultural landowners and operators who have employee housing on their properties. To number one, make sure it's safe. If it's unsafe, find alternative housing for the workers. And then where necessary to work and feasible to work with the property owners to make these living conditions safe and to provide technical assistance where we think it's feasible to get them properly permitted to help these farm owners complete the process so that we can have safe and legal housing in our agricultural areas. So it's going to be an intensive effort that will unfold over many months. And I'll be pleased to keep you posted on how that effort is going. So finally, with regard to hybrid meetings, thanks to Jonathan Mercedes and others on staff who've been working with other folks in the county here to get us to a place where we'll be ready to accommodate public participation remotely. And Janice, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is we will be ready at the next meeting, March 22nd to, to allow for public participation via Zoom. Thanks, Commissioner Ramirez, for your comments. We appreciate your patience. Thanks, Commissioner Ramirez, for your comments. We appreciate your patience as we work through some of these technical challenges. But we've heard loud and clear that allowing remote participation by the public is important and we will be. Making sure we're able to accommodate that moving forward. It's still very important that commissioners attend in person. As we discussed before, and if you have questions about that, both Tim and I would be happy to speak to you individually about that. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I did, I did. Just a follow-up from previously. The, okay, the bulk was kind of an update too. So the bulk propane facility on Airport Street, which you're familiar with. In Moss Beach is listed for sale. And the tank gauge reads empty. The deadline has passed for major modification of the perimeter fence. Nothing's been done. The sale listing describes the property as fully fenced. So will the county follow up on the unpermitted fence issue? There's no telling how long this may be on the market. They've listed it, this is one and a half acres. Really constrained severely constrained by the airport across the street and they're listed at 2.5 million. Vacant land. So did you? So what what will, well. There's the larger picture of does the county have? Any interest? In the parcel or or what the future is there, but the immediate thing, what is your position on? The the fence, the unpermitted fence and how long will that be allowed to be ignored?
Right, and this has recently come to our attention and I get one of the. Things that we're struggling with is that the applicant does have permission to install a replacement fence. The design of that and location of that replacement fence was intended to. Address the needs to keep that propane facility safe. If the propane facility will be removed. Then the need for a fence. Is eliminated at this point in time. And so I think part of the dilemma we're in from an enforcement perspective is. If we force removal of that existing fence at this point in time. Will the owner then construct? The fence that they have been permitted to install, which may be. Excessive in the instance that the. Propane facility is going to be removed. So if. The current status is that that use will be abandoned. Then I think there's also a strong argument that. Know the associated fencing should also be removed and so. I, you know, I'd be open to hearing commissioners' perspective on this if you'd like to offer, although this is not a hearing setting, so we, you know. I'll have to make my own independent judgments on this. But. I think what. Staff would like to do is obtain a better understanding from the property owner of their intent, because if they. I think what we'd like to see is both the propane facility as well as the existing fence removed. Without a new fence installed. However. I understand that the neighboring properties may desire a fence for protection to. Prevent trespass on the site and so forth, so. I don't know if Commissioner Ketchum, you you like to offer any. Viewpoints in terms of if the existing fencing were to be removed and the propane facility abandoned, what if any fencing? Should be installed on this.
Okay, so the neighboring property, the mobile home park, has its own perimeter fence.
Right.
And so that would not be that that issue would that's not an issue.
So removing the fence would not be of concern to the.
No, it would be a benefit because one side of the fence is leaning on our fence. And in fact, the barbed wire stuff is hanging over the neighbor's porch. And we have this maintenance issue between this, the fence gap is so small. And then the fence along Airport Street. And and is is. Right up to the sidewalk and there's no room to put a bus shelter, which we have long wanted.
Right.
Because it encroaches into the right away. So that has to wait. And then the fence on the south end closest to Big Wave. Is also leaning and stuff and in January, we had. A real gang graffiti thing and that these two outward facing fences, this eight feet tall. Graffiti over the whole thing and and the. The sanitary district has their enclosure there too. They painted over their fence, Hill Ridge. Painted over the graffiti on a marigraz fence. So. It's it's a burden. It's a burden to us.
Okay, well, that's helpful. I I think that. You know, the position that staff is likely to take, you know, subject to further discussions with council is that. That fence should be removed. Within the time certain when, you know, we'll figure out what. We believe is reasonable in terms of a time certain and we'll communicate that to the applicant.
So. Extending from this. We had issues. So there's the grandfathered use. And. The current zoning is still this antiquated M1, which was looped into the plant Princeton thing, which has been dormant for many years. I've been trying to get this M1 zoning updated since 2009. And Rich Gordon said, oh, this would be a good thing to do when we do the airport land use compatibility plan, which was finished long ago. M1 was not anyway, so. We managed to dodge a bullet with Big Wave because the height limit in the M1 is fifty seventy five feet, I think. But. So the concern is a new buyer comes in. And. You know, we've already had a marigraz grandfather presumably any new buyer. The tank is no longer grandfathered, right? A new buyer couldn't come in and have and use that grandfathered tank, could they?
Commissioner Ketchum, I I I'm starting to think that this is reaching a level of detail where it doesn't fall within the scope of the director's report. And it's probably something that if you want to have a discussion, we should agendize it. Or have an offline discussion about it. I'm just a little uncomfortable with the level of detail.
All right, just a couple of other things. The Lost Beach Chevron. Landscape buffer safety thing. Is there any progress on that?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't know. I I know you've been in communication with the planner and I think.
Well, I haven't actually.
You haven't? Okay. That's who I will need to check in.
It's been the CDP was approved over two years ago. There's no building permit. And then the last thing, I had mentioned a few meetings ago about offering a study session on. Shoreline erosion and armoring in the midcoast and that has some slides and basically I just wanted to review. The current situation, got good pictures. The the. The changes we've been making in the last few years as far as condition and then existing rip rap and and what is the plan for that and I would. I would really like to do that study session. I think. And this could so it is not urgent, but could it be scheduled sometime?
Yes, with permission from the chair, absolutely.
Of course. Okay, thanks.
Sure. Yeah, I would like to see this on our agenda.
That's all for me.
Good. Anything? Anything on commissioners' updates, questions?
No, I think we are, yeah, we're we're done with that.
Okay, so I would I would just like to say that. The parking details and and parking. Permit card. It all came in time and it worked out well. First day was a little. Looking around for it, but now we know where to park. So thank you, Janet. Nothing else from me.
All right.
So meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. All right, see you guys. Thank you.